I call this May ninth. I call this May ninth, twenty twenty-three Hybrid Administrative Meeting of the Board of County Commissioners to Order. Chair Baca will be attending via Zoom and myself, Chair Vice Chair Barboa will be chairing the meeting for this evening. We will have a moment of silence followed by the Pledge of Allegiance led by Commissioner Eric Olivas.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty, justice for all.
Madam County Manager, are there any changes or additions to the agenda this evening?
Good evening, Madam Chair and Commissioners. We have one, and that's Item AF under Technical Services. The Safe Streets for All Grant Agreement be deferred to the May twenty-third meeting and a vote is required for that change. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, County Manager. We'll start our evening off right away with proclamation.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
Yeah, I was, I would ask that we take Item AD off of the consent agenda.
Awesome. Thank you.
Madam Chair?
Yes, can I show the list?
I would second Commissioner Casado's request. I'd also like to request that we remove Item eight H from the consent agenda.
Okay, I second that. Do we need to go through a motion? Okay. To remove both those items, Madam Clerk, please call the roll. There's a motion. I could do both at the same time. Thank you.
Madam Vice Chair, thank you. Madam Vice Chair, Barboa.
Yes.
Madam Chair, Baca.
She will be joining remotely, but I think she's, but we do have quorum, so please continue.
Commissioner Casada.
Aye.
Commissioner Benson.
Aye.
Commissioner Olivas.
Aye.
Roll's called.
Thank you, Madam, or Mister Clerk.
And Madam Chair, my apologies, just for the record, those items will now become ten A and nine B.
Thank you. Okay, and we do have, we'll start off with proclamations. Mental Health Awareness Month, this is sponsored by Chair Baca, but because she is unable to be here in person, she asked me to read it off for her, which all of us, the sponsored by Commissioners Barbara Baca, Adrienne Barboa, Stephen Michael Casada, Walt Benson, and Eric Olivas. This is a proclamation in support of Mental Health Awareness Month. Thank you for coming up to the podium. Whereas nearly one in five adults and one in five adolescents in the United States live with a mental illness. And whereas mental health impacts a person's emotional, social, environmental, financial, and overall well-being with significant disparities among racially and ethnically diverse communities. And whereas suicide is now the second-leading cause of death for fifteen-to-twenty-four-year-olds, with teenagers experiencing a seventeen-point-three percent increase in the use of anxiety medications since 2010. And whereas one-third of the United States population lives in a county designated as a mental health professional shortage area. And whereas an estimated forty-four percent of residents detained in jails are suffering from a mental illness, often with co-occurring substance use disorders. And whereas Bernabeu County and all counties serve as a safety net for residents in need, first responders and operator of crisis lines, public hospitals, and detention centers. And whereas Bernabeu County continues to develop behavioral health programs and facilities to help people stay out of jail and avoid crisis by offering mental health and substance use disorder treatment. And now therefore be it resolved that the Board of County Commissioners, the governing body of the Bernabeu County, supports bringing awareness to mental health and that the month of May twenty-twenty-three is proclaimed as Mental Health Awareness Month. Done this ninth day of May twenty-twenty-three in Bernabeu County, State of New Mexico. Thank you so much. Please.
Madam Chair, Madam Vice Chair, members of the Commission, on behalf of the Behavioral Health Initiative and the CARE Campus, we thank you for your support.
Thank you. Any other where I, well personally, I want to thank you. I think you all know how vested I am in this. And that our communities were a staple at the county for so many of our families and communities, and thank you for the work you do every day. Thank you so much for that. And we also have Commissioner Olivas with Motorcycle Awareness Month.
Thank you so much, Madam Chair. I would like to read this into the record. This is a proclamation of the Board, the Bernabeu County Board of Commissioners. Whereas, New Mexico's extensive road systems provide some of the most magnificent riding conditions in the United States, making Bernabeu County an ideal location for motorcycle use. And whereas, many registered motorcyclists who undergo extensive training and testing in order to obtain a license call Bernabeu County home and enjoy the roadways we have to offer. And whereas, riders face a higher risk on the road than those operating vehicles. Statistics show that those operating vehicles are at fault in the majority of all accidents involving a motorcycle. And whereas, it is imperative that motorists always exercise caution and stay alert while traveling on Bernabeu County's road systems. And whereas, the National Highway Traffic Safety Administration has declared May as Motorcycle Awareness Month. It is the desire of this commission to join the National Highway Transportation Safety Administration in raising awareness of the growing number of motorcyclists on Bernabeu County's roadways in order to help prevent accidents and, most importantly, save lives. Now, therefore be it resolved that the Bernabeu County Board of Commissioners do hereby proclaim May twenty-twenty-three as Motorcycle Awareness Month in Bernabeu County and encourages all New Mexicans to renew their commitment to safe driving practices, to watch for motorcyclists, and to be aware of all who share the road. Done this ninth day of May twenty-twenty-three in Bernabeu County, State of New Mexico, Board of Commissioners. And I'd like to welcome you gentlemen to the podium, and if you have any words to say, please.
Well, on behalf of the New Mexico Motorcycle Rights Organization and the Council of Clubs and all the motorcycles, basically that ride the streets, we'd like to thank you. As of today, we have received about fifty-six, yeah, about fifty-six calls of accidents and eleven fatalities just as of today for this year. So, thank you. We appreciate you.
Thank you. Hopefully, we can decrease that number with better awareness. And thank you for being such great advocates for awareness and safety.
Thank you.
If you guys would like to come forward for the plaque.
Thank you so much. Thank you. And now we'll move to Commissioner Benson, National Foster Care Awareness and Appreciation and Recognition Month.
Thank you, Madam Vice Chair, and Ms. Beck and Ms. McKinney, please come down. The Bernabeu County Board of Commissioners, sponsored by Commissioners Baca, Barboa, Casada, Benson, and Olivas. Whereas children are key to our community's future success, prosperity, quality of life, and whereas children have a right to thrive, learn, and grow in a safe and loving environment. And whereas foster parents, including kinship caregivers, provide the love, safety, and stability that children need in order to overcome past traumatic experiences in order to reach their full potential. And whereas Bernabeu County foster parents are caring for and nurturing between one thousand one hundred and one thousand five hundred children and youth in foster care on any given day. And whereas, we must come together as a community to recognize the important role foster parents play in caring for children who have experienced abuse and neglect, supporting family reunification and building strong communities. And whereas, there is always a need for more foster parents in order to ensure children, especially older youth, children with complex needs, and siblings have a safe, stable home in their community. And whereas, there are numerous individuals, nonprofit organizations, and public servants who are dedicated to raising awareness about the needs of children and youth in foster care. Now therefore be it resolved that the Bernabeu County Board of Commissioners joins the nation in specifically recognizing May as National Foster Family Appreciation Month. In honor of the foster parents who act as true champions, who open their hearts to children who need a home and who care for the most vulnerable among us. Done this ninth day of May twenty-twenty-three in Bernabeu County, State of New Mexico. Signed by all the Commissioners. Thank you. And Madam Vice Chair, I'd like to open the mic to Ms. Beck and McKinney.
Thank you, Commissioners. My name is Marilyn Beck. I'm the founder and executive director of the Mexico Child First Network. I would just like to thank you all for supporting this. And I can't go without saying that it feels incredible to stand up here with May as Mental Health Awareness Month. That feels very kismet. It just feels meant to be. And I also want to say that as the founder and organization of this chair of this organization, I work with a lot of agencies. I work with APS. I work with the city. I work with the state. I work with jurisdictions across the state. I work with the nation. And the feedback and support I've received from Bernabeu County is bar none. I've worked with you directly. I've worked with the Commissioners. I don't think it goes without saying that we appreciate. I was just saying how accessible the county is, all that you do with the CARES campus. The work you do matters. And I really, we talk about this legislature being an inaccessible entity, but you at the county have made a positive difference. We recently launched Handle with Care with the City. We're working to bring that countywide. We are doing real work, and it is thanks to you all for engaging to help reduce the need for foster care at all. And that's where we want to get to, but I value what you do, and I just want to thank you. You have a great county manager. You have great Commissioners. You've been into Santa Fe. The work you do supports the work we do, so hopefully someday we won't have to do it. But as long as we have to do it, taking a moment to recognize foster families, grandparents raising grandkids, kinship guardianship, reunification, and then also the foster youth in this system. This is how we make a difference. This is how we make our community better, and so thank you. Oh, and I have something for all of you, so.
Thank you, Ms. Beck. And I just want to say, if each state had ten of you, there wouldn't be any need for foster care. You do an amazing job. And to the audience, if you don't know her, she just, she fights for children. That's it. She just fights for children, and it's awesome. Thank you.
Lots of great stuff going on tonight. Thank you. Next, we have a proclamation for Building Safety Month with sponsors Commissioner Casada and Commissioner Benson.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Yeah, Commissioner Benson, why don't you go ahead and you read proclamation, and then we'll give some information forward to the committee.
Sounds good. Okay, the Bernabeu County Board of Commissioners, sponsored by Commissioners Baca, Barboa, Casada, Benson, and Olivas. Whereas the county's building department is committed to recognizing that our growth and strength depends on the safety and essential role of our homes, buildings, and infrastructure play, both in everyday life and when disasters strike. And whereas, our confidence in the resilience of these buildings that make up our community is achieved through the devotion of vigilant guardians, building safety and fire prevention officials, architects, engineers, builders, tradespeople, design professionals, laborers, plumbers, and others in the construction industry who work year-round to ensure the safe construction of buildings. And whereas, these guardians are experts in the build environment, seeking to create and implement the highest quality of work to protect us in the buildings where we live, learn, work, and play. And whereas, modern building codes include safeguards to protect the public from hazards such as wildland fires, floods, snowstorms, tornadoes, hurricanes, and earthquakes. And whereas, Building Safety Month is recognized by the Board of County Commissioners to remind the public about the critical role of our communities' largely unknown protectors of public safety. Our local code officials who assure us of safe, sustainable, and affordable buildings that are essential to our prosperity. And whereas, safety for all, building codes in action, the theme for Building Safety Month twenty-twenty-three encourages us all to raise awareness about planning for safe and sustainable construction, career opportunities in building safety, and understanding disaster mitigation, energy conservation, and creating a safe and abundant water supply to all of our benefit. And whereas, each year in observance of Building Safety Month, people all over the world are asked to consider the commitment to improve building safety, resilience, and economic investment at home and in the community. And to acknowledge the essential service provided to all of us by local and state building departments, fire prevention bureaus, and federal agencies in protecting the lives and property. Now therefore be it resolved that the Bernabeu County Board of Commissioners does hereby proclaim the month of May as Building Safety Month. Recognizing the contributions of all building safety professionals are vital to the promotion and protection of the health, safety, and welfare of Bernabeu County citizens. Done this ninth day of May twenty-twenty-three in Bernabeu County, State of New Mexico. Signed by all the Board of Commissioners. Thank you so much. Glad to see you all here.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Does anyone want to share some words?
I have some things here that I want to do. Yeah, that's okay. You know, and look, thank you all so much for your work before I read these points and thank the people who work in making sure that as we build and as we grow here in Bernabeu County, that we do it properly and safely. My district is the district that grows, right? This is, my district is the one that's going to continue to grow. Despite whether people want it to grow or not, that's their opinion, but we all know it's going to grow in my district no matter what, and so we thank you for making sure that it grows and it grows properly and safely. I want to thank some of the building staff tonight. Don Raya, Zach Sanchez, Raymond Andrade, Gerald Baca, Carlos Crosby, Joseph Anderson, Jonathan Aguilar, Carl Millholland, Charles Kelsey, Anthony Esparsen, Marvin Lemey, Sharon Moulton, Keisha Pendleton, Parker Sweat. These are the people who go out and do the job. They check on plumbing, electrical, they're permit technicians, building inspectors, certified building officials. All these people, it's just crucial, and as we build and grow, that everything is inspected and done right. And I know you guys work hard every day, and there's a lot always going on in a city that's growing. In twenty-twenty-two, the building selection permitted two-hundred-and-seventy-one million dollars' worth of construction and valuation, collecting two-point-seven in permit fees. Conducted twenty-three-thousand-one-hundred-and-twenty-six inspections in just one year. So far, the twenty-twenty-three, the building selection has permitted sixty-five million dollars' worth of construction and six-hundred-and-sixty-four K in permit fees. Conducted eight-thousand-and-seventeen inspections and reviews. That's just in twenty-twenty-three, and we're only four months in. So you, we know how hard you work, and we really appreciate you. In my district, always. In my district, always we have homes that are unsafe. We send you there to make sure that people, right, don't die. I know we get a lot of complaints that they don't want to have to comply with what the rules and regulations are, but we're not doing it because we're government and we're overseeing everybody and we're telling you what to do. We do it because we care about the community. We want people to live safely. We want everybody to grow old in Burnaleo County and not ever have to fear that where they live or who they live next to is not safe. So thank you so much for your work. Now please, if you would, if you would, tell us a few and let us know about what's going on.
Thank you. We appreciate the support, and we'll continue to do our job and keep Burnaleo County safe.
Awesome. Thank you so much. Madam Vice Chair. Real quick, one more comment, and maybe you can speak to this. I know your department is also helping the city of Albuquerque, which, again, I don't think a lot of people realize how much Burnaleo County does. And so the city has inspecting needs as well, and you are doing it. So thank you. And yeah, can you clarify what you're doing to help the city as well?
And everyone behind you wanted to use those.
I'm the acting building official, certified building official for the city of Albuquerque.
There you go. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
And we have a. Thank you so much. Thank you. All right, tall guys in the back. I'm on a staff or I'd be in the front.
Great. And for our, we have another proclamation acknowledging MDC staff, sponsor Commissioner Benson.
Thank you, Madam Vice Chair. And Warden Jones, please step up, and I know you brought some colleagues with you. So it happens to be Correctional Officers Week, so this is a very appropriate acknowledgement here, done by the Burnaleo County Board of Commissioners, who hereby acknowledge the Metropolitan Detention Center staff for their dedication to saving lives of the inmates entrusted to their care. The best corrections officers are passionate about their jobs and provide compassionate care to each and every inmate. Today, we acknowledge the mounting challenges our corrections officers face as the medical needs of our inmate population continue to grow as a result of the intensifying drug and mental health epidemics gripping our community. Each day, our corrections officers work hard to keep inmates safe from each other and themselves, and they routinely face daunting challenges when tasked with saving inmate lives. In nearly fifty incidents since the beginning of two thousand twenty-three, MDC corrections officers have saved inmates from a variety of life-threatening situations, including medical emergencies and suicide attempts. The Board of County Commissioners thus acknowledges the dedicated officers who have gone above and beyond to save the lives at the Metropolitan Detention Center and all MDC corrections officers for their diligence and continued commitment to inmate safety. We extend our gratitude on behalf of our community this week, which is National Correctional Officers Week and every day beyond. Thank you. Warden Jones?
Madam Chair and Commissioners, first, I'd like to thank you for the recognition for National Correctional Officers Week. We also like to refer to it as Correctional Workers Week. Anybody who works inside that facility, if you've never done it, you have no idea what you're truly faced with day in and day out. The hard work these staff put in is insurmountable. As mentioned, we've had nearly fifty incidents since January first this year where staff have been able to respond to medical emergencies, suicide attempts, and we've been able to save forty-six individuals so far this year. So the staff, whether it's officers, sergeants, lieutenants, case managers, social workers, medical staff, RNs, EMTs, paramedics, everybody working together, everybody with renewed focus on what we're there for and how important it is to save these lives. I brought two with me, Sergeant Joshua Marquez, Sergeant Lisa Duran. I wish I could have brought everybody that was on our list, but these two have both been involved in life-saving incidents where they're there making the split decisions, immediately initiating CPR, and they're making a difference and they're saving lives. So I want to commend them, all the COs, all the case managers, everybody who works there. They're helping us save those precious lives, because no matter if they're locked up in jail or not, it's still a human life and it's precious. So I want to thank y'all for everything that y'all do, supporting us and giving us the ability to do what we do, and hopefully we will see continued success.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Warden, and to our guests here tonight, I just want to say thank you from the bottom of my heart for what you all do. It's, you all serve an integral role in our public safety piece. You are so important to what we do as a county and protecting our community and helping keep people safe. And unfortunately, it's all too often that we hear about those incidents where life is lost, but it's much more rare, that we hear publicly anyway, about those many instances where lives are saved, where officers spring into action and others that work in the facility and save lives and do the right thing. So it's just wonderful that we can acknowledge your contributions today, and I just want to thank you again for what you do.
I just also wanted to thank you personally. Please share with the correctional workers. I understand that every single day you're sacrificing time with your family, sacrificing time for your own health and mental well-being and safety, and you do work that doesn't often get recognized. I hope you truly feel appreciated. I really am thankful for the work that you all do to keep us safe and work with populations that a lot of people don't want to work with. And I'm very thankful for the work that you do and the passion and care you put into it. So thank you so much.
Yeah, thank you, Madam Chair. So I know you said earlier, unless you've been in there, you don't know. I've been in there, sir. I'm probably the only one up here that's been in there, which is a good thing, not a bad thing. But it wasn't, it was because, you know, they had concern for my safety. I felt like I was never threatened in there, and this was back way before me, you know, before you and back when I was a young man. But I don't think people grasp, you know, the job that you all do. It's tough. It's different. And ever since I've been a commissioner, I've always advocated for MDC and my officers that are up there, because it's different in the sense that you live with them every single day. And you know, as well as I do, those are just folks up there for the most part. They made mistakes, you know, and they're paying for that mistake. And because of you, you know, we feel comfortable that they're as safe as they possibly can. And we are doing our part to make sure that we appreciate you, and that is through not only thanking you this week or thanking you tonight, but making sure that you have the resources, Warden, and that your officers have the pay to retain your officers. And as we keep working forward to do better and better, you know, we'll always keep you on our mind as public safety officers. So thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. Thank you. And now we have a proclamation from our county manager on emergency management acknowledgement.
Thank you, Madam Vice Chair, Madam Chair and Commissioners. So yes, I'd like to acknowledge our emergency management department. Burnaleo County's emergency management department is known around the state for showing up big when communities are experiencing natural disasters and other kinds of emergencies. The recent Hemis flooding in Sannibal County was no exception. The week of April tenth, heavy spring runoff turned into localized flooding for communities along the Hemis River. A few community members told our team that they could not recall water ever moving that fast or high on the Hemis River. Sannibal County activated its emergency operations center to coordinate response efforts, and Burnco's emergency management team was present to help with providing needed equipment and planning assistance. The planning assistance included the development of a daily situation report and incident action plan, as well as a damage assessment report. Burnco's emergency management staff staged additional equipment just in case the flooding continued to worsen, including radios and a portable repeater, data connectivity, and a shelter trailer. They also assisted in the development of incident maps, including detour routes that they published to the community. Additionally, Burnco helped set up the finance section for the transition to recovery and reimbursement. So we want to thank you, emergency management, for always be willing to answer the call for help, whoever, whenever it is, whenever, whenever, and wherever there's a need. Burnaleo County and our neighbors around the state know that you can count on us. And I just want to thank you all for always being there for all of us, all the community, and even if it's not Burnaleo County, it's outside of Burnaleo County, not even within New Mexico, but within the United States. So I am just really proud to stand here before you with this amazing group of folks. So I didn't know, Tom, if you wanted to say something?
Teresa could go first.
Sure, absolutely.
I'd like to echo these sentiments. My name's Teresa Grino. I'm the emergency manager for Sannibal County. So I'm the jurisdiction that all of your wonderful employees came and helped. I'm very, very appreciative, myself, as well as all of the residents in Sannibal County, that when I called Tom, he was willing to activate his team and offer whatever assistance and resources we needed. So thank you, thank you, all of you. All of them were there each and every day. Our EOC was activated, and I'm very appreciative of that.
Madam Chair, Commissioners, County Manager, I would like to thank you for the recognition and the support that we get from the county, starting with Chief Perez and the county manager. Anything that we ask, we get that support. I'd really like to thank our team. We have everyone up here today. They put in some long hours and also their families, because that was weekends that they gave up, long nights, back and forth. So just really appreciate that. And I feel like the experience we gained out of that is going to better prepare us for anything that we could face in the future. So thank you.
Thank you. Great. I believe Madam Chair is with us. I think she's been listening. We can't hear you yet, Commissioner Baca. I'm going to give it a second to see if we can make this work. We don't want to, she's been on, but we can, she could hear us, but we can't hear her, so. We'll keep chime, we'll keep chugging along. I think we have a presentation now, and Commissioner Baca, Chair Baca, any toe. We have a presentation, and hopefully she'll be back on soon. I know she's listening in, and we just can't hear her. So before we hear public comment, we will hear Communication Item 5A first, where we have Kirtland Air Force Bulk Fuels Facility spill cleanup. Ms. Diane Agnew to present.
Good evening, Madam Chair, Commissioners. Thank you for the invitation to come and present to you on the Kirtland Air Force Base Bulk Fuels Facility Jet Fuel Leak. We may, I may refer to that as the BFF Project. That's just a shorthand for Bulk Fuels Facility. I'm going to start off with a bit of a site history. So this site was first discovered in nineteen ninety-nine. Bulk fuel facility staff showed up to work, and they discovered that there was bonded jet fuel on the ground. That's actually what's in the lower picture on my slide. You can see the stained soil. This has actually already been excavated about a foot, and you can see how it's dark, dark red along the edges. That's the rough footprint that they discovered it. And over time, as they went through investigating the extent of the contamination as a result of the leak, they did discover that there was substantial soil contamination, and there was also impact to the groundwater. The contamination on site includes many contaminants. Most of them are the common contaminants associated with fuel, betex, which is shorthand for benzene, toluene, ethylbenzene, and xylanes. But there's also ethylene dibromide, and that's the one that we focus on quite a bit at the Water Authority and as a community, because it's traveled the furthest off base and the closest to water supply wells. Ethylene dibromide is, it was an agent that was added to jet fuel for a specific period of time, so it's also a good indicator of the jet fuel traveling, like a tracer contaminant. The site is in Resource Conservation and Recovery Act, or we also call that RICRA for shorthand. That is a federal regulatory process that is being applied here through the New Mexico Environment Department Hazardous Waste Bureau. And RICRA has several rigid steps that every site has to go through. That includes a facility assessment, so that was the initial look at the site to determine whether there was an impact and whether there was a need for additional investigation. That has been cleaned, cleared up for the site. They've checked that box. So now we have to figure out the extent of contamination. And I like to call this defining the problem. In order to solve a problem, we really need to have our hands around how big the problem is and how complex the problem is. And that's called the RICRA Facility Investigation. So when you're in RICRA, you'll discover that it's very heavy in language and also acronyms. So the RICRA Facility Investigation in this site means looking at all the soil contamination, looking at all the groundwater contamination, really understanding what contaminants there are, where are they, so that we can move into the next phase, which is the corrective measures evaluation. And that's really where you start finding the solution to the problem. That's where you figure out what kind of remediation needs to happen to clean it up. But RICRA actually has a couple of fast-track roads that we are important to keep in mind when we talk about the site, and it's called interim measures. So RICRA allows the state of New Mexico and the, in this case, the Air Force, say, "We know that there is groundwater contamination, so we can go out there and do an interim measure that begins cleaning up the contamination right away. While we run that interim measure, we can collect data. That data can go into the corrective measures evaluation, and then we know that we're picking the right remedy for the site. And even ideally, what we've built for an interim measure becomes the final remedy." That's like one way you can get to clean up really efficiently in RICRA. And then there's this other step called remedy selection. That's this kind of tricky step where the Air Force is going to say, "Hey, New Mexico Environment Department, we think this is the final remedy." And then the Environment Department actually chooses the remedy, because once the remedy is selected, they, for all intents and purposes, own the remedy. They take the keys to the car at that point. And then they direct the Air Force to implement. And then they direct the Air Force to implement it. We have been in the RICRA Facility Investigation since the last 20 years. And we've been in a do-loop in this part of the RICRA process. The EDB detections, as I mentioned, have traveled the furthest off-site. They're roughly a little bit more than a half a mile away from our water authority's, nearest water authority's supply well. So we do not have any impacts to our well at this time. We monitor our nearby water supply wells on a monthly basis voluntarily. We know they have not been impacted, and we would like to prevent that from ever, ever happening. In order to do that, actually, one of the things the Water Authority has done is we drilled our own monitoring well. So we put our own data point into the ground so that we can determine more definitively the extent of EDB. And then also have, now we have a point where we know it's not present, and we can keep monitoring it to make sure we don't see it in that well, location. This is my bubble graphic to talk about stakeholder relationships for this site, and I think it's a, it's a modified version of stakeholder model from, from the EPA. And so in the center is our problem. So in the center, we have soil and groundwater that's been impacted by the jet fuel and aviation gas. And the smaller bubbles are showing all the people that touched the problem. And we have, the US Air Force is one bubble. They're the ones that created the risk to, to the environment and to human health. We have another bubble that's the New Mexico Environment Department and EPA. Those are the stakeholders who are responsible for preventing or minimizing the risk to human health and the environment. Then you can see up in the other bubble, maybe adversely affected by decisions. We have the Water Authority there. We have the Veterans Administration. Their hospital well is 600 feet to the west of this plume. And we also have the residents. Everyone who lives in the city of Albuquerque and the Burn Leo County are, have the potential to be adversely affected by decisions being made. And then over in the far off, they aren't directly touching, but they are, they are related here are the contractors. The Air Force pays contractors to do the work to investigate the site. And in the stakeholder model, they may be favorably affected. They can make a profit off of their work for the Air Force to investigate the site, and that's why they're in this bubble. This is a cartoon depiction of what the site conceptual diagram, site conceptual model looks like. And there's a few things I highlight here. One of them is that I have this orange blob, that's a technical term, the orange blob showing the fuel migration. We don't actually know that pathway. We don't know how the fuel moved from the X down into the groundwater. That's a critical need. Because what we do know about the hydrology is this is an old riverbed. And so if you can picture yourself standing on the bosque, you know that some parts we have a sandy bar that's going to be really nice and easy for water to move through. And then we also know, living in Albuquerque, that we have clay in parts of it, and that's going to be less easy to move through. There is this potential for any clay in the, in the subsurface to be a place where fuel can kind of get hung up on. It can, it can pool there. And as long as it stays there and our groundwater rises as a result of the Water Authority's management practices, it could come into touch with that fuel and dissolve and continue to put ethylene dibromide, benzene, toluene into the groundwater. So that's a critical data need. That's currently not understood. And there's also no current source treatment. And then we have down below, the fuel makes it to the groundwater table. We know that's happened because we have EDB in the groundwater. We have benzene. We have toluene. And that contamination, as it dissolves, it moves out away from the site. It flows with groundwater. Groundwater naturally flows. And then we need to understand the extent of that groundwater contamination. Where is that plume going? How far has it gone? Which way is it moving? That's another critical area of data analysis that needs to be done at the site. So you can see that we have some information. There's a whole lot we need to know, but we also have enough to begin. This, one of the success stories in the site came from 2015. We had, we had a rough idea of where groundwater contamination was. And the Water Authority, we brought to the table a consultant. We brought to the table a groundwater model. And we were able to say, you know what, let's put a groundwater extraction well in this location. It is enough that we know it can be pumping out water. We can treat it. We can begin remediation while we continue collecting data. And we have data sufficient to allow for that to happen in the source area as well, while we continue getting our arms around the entire extent. But there is also this I want to bring up. If you have been tracking the Kirtland Project and possibly going to the public meetings, the figure on the right is what the Air Force shows at all of their public meetings. It's the, in this case, this is a picture of the ethylene dibromide at what they call shallow. And you can see that it looks like it's going away. The Air Force is only mapping concentrations of ethylene dibromide above a threshold. So they're not mapping all detections of ethylene dibromide. When you do, when you do map all the detection of ethylene dibromide, you get a very different picture of the site. The other thing that's complicating how the Air Force is depicting the concentrations is they are, they're setting their, their, their set point static. So if we look in this cartoon here, it's like taking a slice of this cartoon, like in the middle of that blue section of groundwater. And as groundwater moves up, that, that plume is also moving up, but they're not changing that set point. That set point is staying the same, no matter what's happening in, in reality. And so when you combine those two things, you can get a plume that looks like what the Air Force has been showing at their public meetings. But on the left is what you can see if you look at what the concentrations are relative to the water table, which is what the technical standard is for reporting concentrations, and then you plot all detections of ethylene dibromide. And I do think it's worth highlighting that not only does the extent of it look different, but you can start to see some interesting behavior in the plume. And you want, and that's good information for designing the remediation system, to make sure you're capturing where contamination is currently and where you think it might be going over time. This is a timeline showing the site from when it was discovered. So again, that was in 1999. We're sitting in 2023. You can also see in this chart the funding trends for this, for the project. So you can see that there's virtually no minimal funding happening at the site. In 2014, 2015, thanks to advocacy from elected officials like yourselves, the Air Force got funding allocated to the site. That's when we saw the pump and treat system get installed, designed and installed. That's when we saw a lot of progress at the site. You can see that that's kind of been decaying ever since the 2014, 2015 timeframe, very minimal funding right now. This graphic is also highlighting how there was soil vapor removal happening. That was happening successfully at the site. That is a source area treatment. It was removing fuel from the ground, and it was, it was turned off in 2015. The system was decommissioned. But it is a technology we know works at the site and could actually go after the fuel while we work through the RICRA process. The other thing that's concerning to the Water Authority is that the site is currently, in RICRA, the way it works is that the Air Force needs to have approved work plans from the state of New Mexico so that everybody agrees with the data that's being collected, that it's going to be quality data, robust data, and that it can be used for informed decisions. The Air Force does not currently have an approved work plan for any of the data that they're collecting. In fact, specifically, the New Mexico Environment Department has disapproved their work plans. And that means that the data that they're collecting out there right now is not only, not acceptable to the state of New Mexico, but it's not technically defensible and cannot be used for making decisions. That also goes for reports. So reports are an important part of the RICRA process to get to that corrective measures evaluation. And since 2020, the Air Force has received 16 notices of disapproval. That includes work plans and reports. And to date, they have not submitted a compliant document to the New Mexico Environment Department. The New Mexico Environment Department just last week issued a letter saying that the Air Force had until July 31st to submit work plans that met their requirements. If they do not meet that deadline, then we can expect some more, it's an increased enforcement from the Environment Department. But it's been identified as a very critical need because right now, there's a data being collected that the Water Authority agrees is not usable and should not be leaned on for decision-making. So what do we need moving forward? The Water Authority's position is we need source area remediation immediately. All the data that we are looking at, and again, I'm going to put the asterisk on there because that's data that we think cannot be used in decision-making. But there's enough data, there's multiple lines of evidence, that source area treatment needs to happen immediately. The Water Authority, we've looked at the technology we've used previously, that soil vapor remove, removal technology was effective. It was successful. It can be implemented with ease as an option for everyone to look at for the interim measure. We need guaranteed funding allocation. As you can see in this graphic, things happen when there's funding. So if we can get restoration of adequate funding, then that can actually eliminate, eliminate that obstacle in getting the Air Force to make progress. We also need continued support from the New Mexico Environment Department. They are working very hard right now to get the site squared up in RICRA so that they can get to the final remedy and that can move forward with minimal obstacles. So, and we need the Air Force to recognize our enforcement. That's so far not happening at the site. We need engagement from the public and elected officials like yourselves. We've seen that work very effectively in the past. We know it will work. When you all are supporting the progress at the site, it'll happen, and we look forward to working together with you. And then we want a continuation of a memorandum of agreement with Kirtland Air Force Base. This is just an agreement that allows us to continue working together as partners, keeps everyone a seat at the table. And with that, I'll stand for questions.
Thank you, Madam Chair, and I appreciate you, Diane, for, for being here tonight to, to give us this update. I just want to implore my colleagues here that this is a problem, while it is technically in District 3. This is a problem that has the potential to affect every commissioner, every resident of this metropolitan area, or nearly everyone. Because as I've come through my service on the Water Authority Board to understand, the water produced at an individual well does not necessarily stay in that neighborhood. We have a network that, that's been designed by some brilliant engineers and great staff at the, at the Authority that allows us to move water from locations where it is plentiful, where it is perhaps better quality, better sourced water, to areas where it is less plentiful or less quality. For example, I believe many of our wells on the west side have significant arsenic contamination problems, things like that. The Ridgecrest Well Field, which is where this is located, is our most productive and some of our highest quality groundwater. And so to lose that well field, or even talk about the potential of losing that, is an incredible loss to our entire community. This is first and foremost, of course, a health problem because I don't think any of us want to drink jet fuel or advocate for anyone to be in contact with these contaminants in drinking water or otherwise. This water is unusable in, in its current state. But this is also an economic development issue because we know that we live in an arid region. We have significant water challenges throughout our region. And the Water Authority has done and made great strides in making a balanced portfolio that, that uses aquifer water, surface water, reuse water. We have devised a, a system that, that's really bought us time and allowed for more economic growth in the face of significant challenges to, to our water. But this is lurking in the background, and it really does potentially have catastrophic consequences. And so I, I just want to, again, implore my, my fellow elected officials here on the dais to really take this seriously because this is not a problem until it's a huge problem. And our partners at the Water Authority and our residents are truly the victims in this story. This is something that we did not bring upon ourselves as a community. I support the Air Force. I think all of us here do. We, we recognize the incredible economic benefit of that facility and, and all the work that goes on at Kirtland and all the employment that it does. But that does not mean that, that they get off the hook or that somehow they are above the law. And so I just want to encourage all of us here to, to make this a priority. Keep this near the top or at the top of your list when you're advocating to federal officials, to our governor, to, to anyone that will listen, that this is an issue that needs to be resolved. The Air Force needs to be held accountable. And the fact that we have 16 extensions of work plan indicate that they're not taking this seriously, and, and that needs to change. So I'm grateful for folks like yourself and so many of the good staff at the Water Authority that have, have pushed this forward and continue to bring this to light. And I'm certainly committed to making sure that we continue this fight and, and work with our federal delegation to make sure that the Air Force is held accountable for this.
Thank you, Madam Chair. You know, we've been on your side as long as I've been a commissioner. And I think the statement is still valid that, you know, Kirtland Air Force Base finds a way to stall and finds a way to block. And, you know, we, we can write as many letters as you'd like. We can, you know, advocate as strong as we can. Always when I talk to our federal elected officials, that's one of the things I always bring up because that is affecting, you know, the development in that area and, and the water sources that we have, the limited water sources that we, we do have as we grow. And, you know, we'll continue to do that. But I think, you know, someone above us needs to talk to the federal government, talk to the military and say, enough is enough, enough stalling. We need to remediate this. This needs to happen. You have always showed us this plan before. You know exactly how to tackle this problem. The problem is, our own government won't allow us to tackle this problem. And every year, we, you know, we're reminded that we're still at the same point. I've almost served eight years as a county commissioner, and we are at the same point. And so it needs to happen at the federal level. We need to start, you know, and my office will. If you'd like to write not only letters to, you know, our state officials and our federal officials, but to the military itself, asking and pleading that we need their help and they need to move forward. So thank you for always bringing this up to our attention and letting the public know that we need them to stand behind us as well.
Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. Thank you, Commissioner Lebus. Oh, yes, Commissioner Benson, go ahead.
Yeah, I did have a question. Can you pull up the map again that shows the two different maps, the Water Authorities and? And when I served on the Water Authority, this was an issue then. And Mr. Sanchez is not a, an emotional or reactionary individual. He's very calm and, and calculated and, and I trust the data that he puts out and the whole, the whole Water Authority Board. But can you explain, since as best you can, if, if the Air Force was here to explain themselves, which they're not, so we're just, we have to rely on you, why is their map different? What justification are they using for a map that looks very different from the Water Authorities?
Madam Chair, Commissioner Benson, I can, I can answer that. I actually have, as Commissioner Kesar, a load of two. I've been on this project for a long time, and prior to my position at the Water Authority, I was the regulator for this site. So it happens that I know the history behind the reference elevations, which are some, is some of this. So what the Air Force is doing is they are mapping to the maximum contaminant level for ethylene dibromide. That's a regulatory level of 0.05 micrograms per liter. So, and their statement is that they're doing that because that's what they can be regulatory held to. And it's not quite, that's not quite a full fact, like there is the potential to go lower than that with regulators. But it's also not appropriate for site characterization. It's actually much more appropriate to look at all detections for the reason that you want to know where it is in complete, like a complete picture, and then where it might be migrating to. So if you don't look at all detections, you'll miss some of those plume dynamics. But that's, that's the reason why they're contouring to what they're contouring to. The reference elevation was something that they, they didn't used to do that. They actually used to do what we're doing on the left. They used to map relative to the water table. And then around 2016, 2017 timeframe, they switched to these static water elevations. And at the time, it was because it was, the contractor was having a hard time contouring data every quarter that was changing. So they were, they wanted to try the static elevation method. And in theory, that could work if they were changing it as the water table changed and the aquifer was changing, but they haven't done that. Those are the same reference elevations they had in 2016. The water table in this area has come up 15 feet since then. So when that was set in 2016, that was close to the water table. But thankfully, our aquifer is rebounding and that water level is coming up. It's what we wanted to do. But it renders that elevation not very useful.
Okay, thank you.
And if you could keep that up, whoever's controlling. I think too, that those slides- I think, too, that the slide, as you called the cartoon slide, if we could go to that. Also, that other slide doesn't show, right, the depth. And that's, and I appreciate this slide a lot because I've been involved a little bit in to see also the depth, because we have to think about both. And we're also thinking, and I live adjacent to the Air Force Base and my whole life, and I just think of, of course, it impacts the whole counties, as has already been stated, but our community there. I also just think of, like, when we see that pool going on the other map, we see it go, we can see how far it goes out, but we're not seeing how far it goes down. And this is about our future generations, right? Because right now, like, I'm very thankful for the Water Utility Authority making the move to get your own monitoring site. Like, if, I just think if they hadn't, didn't have you and we were asleep at the will, what would be going on here? So I'm really thankful for you and the leadership at the Water Utility Authority to stay on top of this. And we did, we have seen some progress, right? And because so much resources were invested in it previously, and that's what we need, again, is that kind of commitment, investment. Mike, one, a couple of questions, I guess. You mentioned the MOA, does that currently exist or has that, does it need renewal?
Memorandum of Agreement with Kirtland Air Force Base. Sorry to interrupt. Madam Chair, that does not currently exist. The, it used to previously, and so it's just a matter of, you know, going back and getting everyone to the table and getting it signed.
Okay. And I just wanted to make sure, I love that you put continued support to ensure over. What is continued support?
Madam Chair, I think that, it's, the way I see that is twofold. Support of the New Mexico Environment Department in that they get recognition for their enforcement and what they're asking for needs to be met, and providing the backing to do that. Because what happened, and it was captured recently, the NMD put their letter out asking for work plans by July 31st. Immediately, the Air Force was trying to come up with a meeting so they could skirt that back. And the NMD was, is saying, no, you need, that's the deadline. You need to meet that deadline. We've met with you, we've talked with you. So they need our support in that. They need to be able to get, know that they've got the communities backing, the Water Authorities backing, elected officials to hold that line and hold the Air Force accountable. And then the Air Force needs to have that support system, funding, and, you know, through elected official pressure to meet those needs, to recognize the oversight of the New Mexico Environment Department. Because I think we've seen, particularly in the last three years, that they have not been recognizing that. As you mentioned, Commissioner Olivas, through the extension requests, through the, currently, through the current monitoring program under specifically disapproved work plans, is showing that they maybe are not taking the oversight as seriously as they could. And so we need to support both sides in doing that.
Thank you so much. I just want to say, I think it's obvious that all the commission supports and wants to see this remediated and good for our future, for now and for our future generations. I just, tonight is, we talked about Mental Health Week, and we know that environmental injustices and toxins in our community contribute to behavioral mental health problems and are tied. And this is the most dense population in our whole entire state, this area, and includes most of our behavioral health providers. So I just, thank you again for always keeping us aware, and we want to support.
Thank you very much.
Thank you for bringing here today. Awesome. We will move now to public comment. You will have two minutes to share your public comment for folks that are signed up. You will then be notified when your time is up. For those participating via Zoom, you will be muted and moved to the waiting room. Should any of the commissioners have follow-up questions to your comments, you will have an opportunity to answer. Julianne, do we have anyone signed up to speak? And please call the first name.
Madam Chair, we have two speakers this evening, all in person. And we will start off with Mr. Don Trader, followed by Matt Look.
Most movies made in New Mexico and in the United States are crap, glamorizing violence or addiction to money, or rape, or robbery, or rage, or revenge, or booze, or war. Most New Mexico and US movies are nothing to celebrate, regardless how many jobs and dollars. A stupid waste of time, talent, money. Superb acting, well-designed sets, spectacular scenery, like using gold platters to serve poison, rotten garbage. Nothing uplifting, nothing inspiring, nothing life-changing. Sadly, most actors will take the part if the pay is high enough, no matter how violent or how shallow the movie is. Why should actors be paid more money than farmworkers sweating in the hot sun to harvest fruit and vegetables for us to eat? Imagine if Breaking Bad had instead been Breaking Free, about meth users breaking free from meth. As a teenager on our Illinois farm, sadly, foolishly, I wasted many precious hours addicted to violent TV westerns. I woke up, I changed. Now I would not watch those violent TV westerns if I were paid $1,000 an hour. I treasure movies that touch me deeply, to shed tears, and to live with understanding and compassion for all people. One movie I recommend is La Mission, starring Benjamin Bratt.
Mr. Matt Look?
My name is Matthew Look. I manage property for Garrett Development on the west side. I'm here tonight to talk to you about a problem of illegal dumping and trespassing and ask for your assistance and support. Illegal dumping and trespassing is not new to the county. As a landowner, it's just part of owning land. What is new is the increased activity amount type boldness and the aggressive nature of the violators. The commission needs to know that there is a real danger and a real cost to property owners, county employees, and the police. Violators are bold enough to use heavy equipment to move jersey barriers, large boulders, weighing tons, and as they cut reinforced fences, heavy-duty cables, chains and locks. This is all done in plain sight without the worry of penalty or repercussions. There's even rumor of a rogue stolen City of Albuquerque skid steer bobcat being used to combat against anti-trespassing measures. What's most concerning is the violent nature of the violators. My contractors, ranchers, surveyors, and linemen from PNM have all been shot at these locations. I've met with APD on saturation patrols because of the shootings that occur in the escarpment onto the houses down below. I have to tell you how unnerving it is to watch officers add additional high-velocity rifle plates to bolster their existing body armor just so they can walk around sight because they fear somebody else is going to take a shot at them. As a property owner, you can easily feel helpless against these violators. I can't imagine what some of your inspectors feel when they approach these violators unarmed, alone, in some of the most isolated locations in the county. It's hard to find contractors when there's a real threat of violence. This year, GDC is on pace to spend over $100,000 in trash cleanup and anti-trespassing efforts and plan to move over 20,000 pounds of other people's trash. Property owners are victims, spending thousands of dollars to clean up and protect their property and the environment. I'm happy to hear that the county has recently approved four new positions for deputy officers for open space and conservation. I applaud the commission for their efforts and implore you to do more. Thank you.
And that concludes public comment.
Thank you, Mr. Benson.
Thank you. I also, did you hand out the letter?
Yeah, we got it.
Great, thank you.
Thank you for the pictures. Great. Thank you for public comment. We move now to item six, Appointment to Advisory Boards and Committees.
Madam Chair?
Yes, Commissioner Casada.
Yeah, I'd like to remove number two, my nomination for the At-Large UNM Trustee Board.
Okay, do we have to get a second for, yeah, I could second that. Please call the roll.
Thank you, Madam Vice Chair Barboa. Madam Vice Chair Barboa?
Yes.
Madam Chair Baca?
Commissioner Casada?
Yes.
Commissioner Benson?
Yes.
Commissioner Olivas?
Yes.
And Madam Vice Chair, I believe Madam Chair had her hand up in opposition, I mean in...
Support.
Support.
Yes, she's...
Thank you, Madam Vice Chair.
Thank you, thank you, Madam Chair. I believe we counted your vote. Okay, we will move motion to approve the nomination, I move to approve the nomination to reappoint Trey Hammond, representing At-Large on the UNMH Board of Trustees.
Second.
Thank you. Please call the roll.
Madam Vice Chair Barboa?
Yes.
Madam Chair Baca? Commissioner Casada?
No.
Commissioner Benson?
Yes.
Commissioner Olivas?
Yes.
Thank you. Commissioner Olivas, did you want to...
Thank you, Madam Chair. I would like to make a motion to approve the nomination of Dr. Angelie Tinasia, who's here in the audience with us tonight, representing the At-Large position on the UNMH Board of Trustees.
Second, that? Any discussion?
Madam Chair?
Yes.
I just did want to recognize the doctor for being here with us today. She has an incredible history of service to our community in many positions across the medical and just public service field and bringing a wealth of knowledge and experience in healthcare, behavioral health, and public health medicine. So I just want to say, we are so appreciative of all those that volunteer for service on this board and so many others that we have here, but particularly to Dr. Tinasia, thank you for volunteering to serve, and I think that you bring a lot to this board, and I urge my colleagues' support.
Thank you. And I'd just like to add to that, you know, I've gotten to work and witnessed your work. You already serve on the Addiction Treatment Advisory Board, commit so much of your time. I see you at almost every meeting for, from detention facility oversights to UNM Health Task Force. You are just such a committed, passionate worker. And I think right now that is such an opportune time while we are moving into the transition of MDC and your work and care there. I just think this is for UNMH. And of course, most importantly, is your work as a community provider that has to work and often in collaboration or in partnership or in contract with University Hospital. So I'm just really thankful that you're willing to take this on, and thankful for Commissioner Olivas and Commissioner Baca for nominating you. So if any other discussion? Clerk, please call the roll. I know you're not the clerk. Thank you, please call the roll.
Madam Vice Chair Barboa?
Yes.
Madam Chair Baca? Voting yes. Commissioner Casada?
No.
Commissioner Benson?
Yes.
Commissioner Olivas?
Yes.
Okay, we have approval for both those. Thank you very much. And we'll move on. Moving to approval of the minutes, the, I moved to approve the April 25th, 2023 Administrative Meeting Minutes. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you. Please call the roll.
Madam Vice Chair Barboa?
Yes.
Madam Chair Baca? Voting yes. Commissioner Casada?
Yes.
Commissioner Benson?
Yes.
Commissioner Olivas?
Yes.
Thank you, that passes. Approval of Consent Agenda. We have pulled a few items. Madam Clerk, please, or sorry, please provide resolution numbers for items 8A, B, D, and G. And the consent agenda has been published and made available to the public. Please provide those numbers.
Madam Vice Chair Barboa, for item 8A2, FR 202352, for item 8B, FR 202353. Item 8D has been moved to item 9A, or I'm sorry, 9B. So that leaves me with...
I think that's it for this round. Oh, G.
We leave item 8G, FR 202354.
Great, thank you for that. I move to approve the consent agenda. Can I please have a second?
Second.
All those in favor, please say, oh, I think we need to call the roll. Please call the roll.
Vice Chair Barboa?
Yes.
Chair, Madam Chair Baca? Voting yes. Commissioner Casada?
Aye.
Commissioner Benson?
Aye.
Commissioner Olivas?
Yes. Madam Chair?
Yes.
If I could just have a quick point of personal privilege here, I just wanted to thank our technical services staff for their work on item G. This is a partnership with Ciudad Soil and Water Conservation District for some improvements to the Tejeros Creek Bed in my district, just outside of our Los Vecinos Community Center and some county open space. A great example of a true collaboration between Ciudad and our division in our county government and leveraging our county resources in what is ultimately a fully reimbursable grant. So we will end up spending nothing on this project that will invest nearly $1 million in District Five and in restoring this creek bed. So just big kudos to staff and thank you for bringing this project and all your work on that.
Madam Chair?
Yes, Commissioner Benson?
Also a point of privilege, item 8C, the project for the ARPA funds for $5 million for the Luequera watershed. Just want to thank Clay and the county staff for working on this. This is a project that's been 15 years in the making and kind of pushed to the backburner. And again, these are ARPA funds, federal funds, that we get to implement because it's water usage. So I'm excited for this. It's a long time coming. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, moving on to adoption of resolutions. Please provide resolution numbers for items nine, under nine.
Madam Vice Chair, item 9A1, FR 202355. Item 9A4, FR 202356.
Thank you. And item 9A, we will have Director Jackie Sanchez. Thank you for being here. Our 2023 fiscal year third quarter budget reconciliation.
Good evening, Madam Chair, Madam Vice Chair and Commissioners. My name is Jackie Sanchez, Director of Accounting and Budget. This agenda is a fiscal year 2023 third quarter budget reconciliation. This is normally on the consent agenda, and this is a standard quarterly cleanup of items. So for the next quarterly reconciliation and going forward, it will return to consent. The agenda consists of five motions, which DCM Reagan has provided a briefing. The motions are as follows. To approve financial resolution in the amount of $3,175,767 for one-time appropriations, which are detailed in Attachment A. And these are non-recurring. To approve four full-time regular information technology cybersecurity positions, which are covered through the ARPA funds for FY '24 and '25. To approve four full-time regular Barnum Leo County Sheriff's Office... Office positions, and this is for management resource system and other reporting needs, to approve financial resolution in the amount of two million nine hundred fifty-three thousand four hundred four for funds received in fiscal year 2023 from the opioid abatement settlement, and this is to record the revenue portion of the budget. To authorize the county manager or designee pursuant to Administrative Resolution 2019-49 to seek reimbursement to the general fund for any project or initiative funded by the general fund that subsequently receives funding in whole or part from an alternative funding source, such as another agency, bond proceeds, or grants, and if this happens to exceed the county manager's authority, then it would be brought forth to the Board of County Commissioners for approval. The budget was approved by the Board of County Commissioners on April 12, 2022, and by the State of New Mexico DFA on August 13, 2022, per state statute. The quarterly adjustments will be submitted to DFA for approval, I stand for questions.
Any questions? Yes, Commissioner Olivas.
Thank you, Madam Chair, Ms. Sanchez, I just had one question on motion number three in regards to the four full-time Burnley County Sheriff's Office positions, were those included in the requests that were previously approved, related to victim advocates and social workers at our last meeting, is that these items related in any way?
I'm not sure if
Jackie? No, Commissioner, they were not, these are, the sheriff had come forth with these before the ones that were part of the FY 24 budget, so these are additional on top of that, so there was one data specialist, and then three, what are they called, clorenxic positions, but these are in addition to the ones that we had in the FY 24 budget.
Understood.
So this would be for two patching teams, one threat assessment and intelligence, and one recovery, no, I'm sorry, that's the wrong This would be for, pardon?
I'm sorry, you were asking about the sheriffs, right?
Yes.
Oh, yes, I'm sorry, this would be for one business support analyst, and three forensic case managers. And so, this would be for data analysis and sequel serving, server reporting services, reporting for IPR requests, and the forensic case manager positions request would enhance the social work and victim advocacy services at VCSO.
And are these positions then included in the FY 24 budget that was just approved, or is this essentially an amendment to that budget as well?
These would be recurring for the FY 24, 25 biennial budget.
They'll be added in 23, so they were not a part of the 24 numbers, but they would be filled and still working in 24, but they were not a part of the 24 budget, we had started working on these with the sheriff prior to the 24 budget, and these were some that he identified that he needed to fill before we had those in the 24 budget, in addition to that, I'm sorry, Jackie, that's
It's okay, and those would be recurring going forward as well.
So will we then be doing another one of these amendments or adjustments to, for 24 as well, because these were not included in the 24 budget that was approved at our last meeting?
They would be, yes, so we have the quarterly budget adjustments every quarter, so probably in the September budget adjustments, when we do that, or the first quarter of 24, we pick up any FRs that occurred between the time there was the last budget approval, and any additions up to that point, and we bring all of that current, so yes.
Understood, thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions? Okay, I move to approve the fiscal year 2023 items
Second.
One through five, we have a second, please call the roll.
Madam Vice Chair Barboia?
Yes.
Madam Chair Baca? Voting yes. Commissioner Casada?
Aye.
Commissioner Benson?
Aye.
Commissioner Olivas?
Yes.
Thank you, you have a deep ask.
Thank you, Madam Chair, Madam Vice Chair and Commissioners.
Thank you, we now move to item 9B, Fleet and Facilities Management. Great to see you again today, thank you.
Good evening, Madam Chair and Commissioners, my name is Jared Devett, I'm the Director of Fleet and Facilities for Burnley County, and I'm here to present Fire Station 37 for your approval, Fire Station 37 is currently in the open bid process, we've received two successful respondents to this bid, Fire Station is going to be located on the southwest corner of Central and Attrisco, Attrisco Vista, it's going to be a four apparatus bay fire station with eleven bunks and about twelve thousand square feet, it'll be the largest fire station in the county, it'll serve MDC, all of the development around Amazon, the anticipated residential growth in that area, it was originally slated to be built right behind the Route 66 Visitor Center, but because of the grade and slope of the property, it had to be moved to a more suitable location, so the initial design in 2019 was kind of put on pause for about two years, until we found a suitable location where it currently is going to be placed, and we'd like to request your approval of that station, Chief Perez has done a fantastic job of designing a station that fits the needs of the community out there, there's nobody that cares more about the firefighters and the community as far as fire protection than Chief Perez, and I can say that with 100% confidence, he's made a station that's going to be great for these firefighters, and is also going to be able to handle any growth in that area that comes up, and I defer to him if there's any questions about the coverage, increased response times, or anything like that.
Thank you, Jared, Madam Chair, Commissioners, it's been a privilege to get to work side by side with Jared and his team on designing this station, we hit a few little bumps here and there, we were dealing with it through COVID, but here we are, and part of the reason why I asked for this to be pulled off of the consensus, I think it's important for the community to realize that this will be the first official new district fire station that the county has added in thirty years, that is a really, really big undertaking of this commission, and our county manager, and teams involved with it, so I didn't want this to go unrecognized, because it should be something to celebrate if approved tonight, and the fact that we'll be able to bring this amount of coverage to an area that has grown immensely in the last, you know, ten to fifteen years, so it'll be good for us to be out there, it'll be a seven-minute response to MDC, you heard the chief up here earlier, or the warden, talking about lives that were being saved, this will just help to continue to build upon the good work that he and his team are doing at MDC in saving lives and protecting the folks in their care, right now, we're about a twenty-five minute response to MDC, so that alone is enough reason to bring a station like this to the area, and it will definitely be state-of-the-art, so I'm looking forward to your approval tonight, and allowing us to break ground and start building, again, what will be the newest addition in the last thirty years to Burnley County.
Thank you, Chief Perez, Commissioner Casada.
Thank you, Madam Chair, Chief, thank you so much, you know, the area has always been kind of, the coverage there has been kind of, and me and you have talked about it at length, when I even first became a commissioner, it was something that we both thought was super important to the residents up there, I know a lot of people don't go up there, and they don't have a reason to, but we do, we live up there, that's where our homes are, and I just want to publicly thank you for making us feel safer, for bringing much-needed public safety to my area, and for doing it at this scale, because, again, I'll say it like I said it earlier, that's where the city is going to grow, whether we like it or not, and we appreciate that we're doing it right this time, as it grows, we're already starting with public safety, and not the other way around, so I appreciate your vision, and thank you so much.
Yeah, this is exciting, did you say that Attrisco and Central is the?
Madam Chair, correct.
Or Attrisco Vista?
Attrisco Vista, and yeah, and Central.
So they're going to eat Monty's hamburgers for lunch, great, this is exciting, thank you for getting it off the consent agenda, and letting our public know that this is happening, thank you.
Madam Chair?
Yes, Commissioner Olivas?
I just had a quick question for you, this is exciting, and very supportive of this effort to bring public safety to our residents on the west side and the west mesa, my question is, can you tell me, are there any elements of this design, you said it's state-of-the-art, that incorporates sustainability components, PV, anything like that at this time?
Madam Chair, Commissioner, not as of yet, as far as PV is concerned, we are using state-of-the-art design, and it mostly formed concrete forms, they're highly insulated, they're going to be more efficient than a typical stick construction, which kind of led to the specialization of the bid, but that's something that we're proud of with the architect that we picked, is they picked a design that's going to be a little more green, a little more efficient, thank you.
Thank you, thank you, we'll now move to ten approvals, and we have ten
I'll move for approval.
Technical Services, oh, we haven't, did we not pass one?
No.
Sorry, thank you, Kirk, please call the roll, second, and please call the roll.
Vice Chair Barboia?
Yes.
We are dealing with item 9B.
9B.
FR 202357, so I'll call the roll.
Thank you.
Madam Vice Chair Barboia?
Yes.
Madam Chair Baca? Voting yes.
She's clapping.
Commissioner Casada?
Aye.
Commissioner Benson?
Aye.
Commissioner Olivas?
Yes.
Wonderful, fire station on the way, thank you, and now I will appropriately move on to items 10, to item 10A, Technical Services, and looks like we have Mr. Lopez ready to present.
Yes, good evening, Madam Chair, Madam County Manager, members of the commission, I'm Brian Lopez, I'm the Technical Services Director for Burnley County, and I'm here to present for Attrisco Heritage, 118th Street, Dennis Chavez Boulevard, project improvements. For this particular project, I'm going to kind of step back and just kind of go through all the steps that it's kind of taken to get to this particular agenda item, when Attrisco Heritage first came into the county, the way the traffic impact analysis that APS provided to the county, which does kind of dictate the improvements that are required as part of the site when it comes in, was 100% bus in, and so as such, there wasn't quite the need for some of the infrastructure that would normally be required, however, it's been apparent since the school was constructed, that they're far from the 100%, parents that were parking on the side of the road, along 118th Street during drop-off and pickup, and so around 2015, a capital outlay was given to the county in which curb and gutter was placed kind of along the front edge of George I. Sanchez, as that's where most of the parents were parking, well, once that curb and gutter went in on that east side, the problem kind of migrated north, and so there was an additional capital outlay that was given, in which the curb and gutter was then extended from that first phase to the intersection of Dennis Chavez, and as well as we did redo and extend the bike trail slash multi-use path from Dennis Chavez to the first entrance at George I. Sanchez, sorry, not Chavez, since then, we've kind of gone to the intersection part, and the other half of, not just the vehicles illegally parking essentially, there's also the concerns of during those peak hours, the signal timing at Dennis Chavez is not the most efficient, so it's leading to a lot of queue times, long lines, and people, you know, kind of gunning it, and driving unsafe during yellow lights, red lights, and such, which is kind of creating another issue with the amount of students that are being dropped off now in Dennis Chavez, that are walking towards the school, and so this project's a little unique in that 118th Street is a county road, the intersection itself is a city of Albuquerque intersection, and then Dennis Chavez is a Mexico Department of Transportation road, and so we have been working collaboratively to kind of address that, and as such, for this particular project, while the DOT did not provide any funds, they are donating some of the signal equipment, which is kind of hard to get, just with lead times right now, and it is quite expensive, so with this project, we're going to be updating the ADA ramps at the intersection of Dennis Chavez, because what's happening now is, a lot of the parents are parking on the north side of the intersection of 118th Street and Dennis Chavez, and we're getting platoons of kids that are walking across that intersection, and it's not really striped as a crosswalk, and there's really no curb returns, it's not ADA compliant, and so there are issues, and so this project is going to address those ADA issues, it is going to be designed and striped as a four-way crosswalk, and we're also, we have done a previous study where the signal timing can be adjusted to kind of help with the queue times in Dennis Chavez, and so with the redesigned intersection and the new signal equipment, we will implement the recommendations of the traffic study to retime some of those signals, and hopefully make this a more useful and safe crossing at the school. The project as it stands now is completely designed, we did bid it through our on-call back in October, however, there was some additional signal equipment that put it outside of the limits of the on-call, and then also just what we've seen with COVID pricing, those costs have escalated beyond the remaining capital outlay amounts that we have available, as such, we did reach out to the city, they did have a capital outlay of 110,000 that they weren't sure how they were going to spend, that they did reauthorize to the county that were applying to this project, and then I do want to thank Commissioner Casada, as we did approach him with the request to use his 2022 District Two capital outlay, the full amount, and 375,000, to apply to this project, so it does limit the amount of bonds that we need, currently, the project has bid, and bids were open on March 30, which we did get two bids, and so we're kind of going through the bid evaluation process now, as part of this particular item, we are asking the BCC to authorize the county manager to award the construction services for this project, and then also authorize the county manager to execute the construction contract, and then also to execute and approve any future funding amendments for this project, and with that, I will stand for questions.
Yes, Commissioner Olivas.
Thank you, Mr. Lopez, for your thorough, detailed explanation of this, I think as Commissioner Casada often says, particularly in certain areas of our community, we build roads without sidewalks, or trails, or without the necessary infrastructure, and now we're going back and backfilling that, which, you know, ultimately costs more, costs lives, costs time, inconvenience to families, to students, to children, and I think it just emphasizes the importance of what we already have, which is a complete streets ordinance that says that, you know, when streets are constructed, they should be constructed to standards that allow for multimodal use of bicyclists, by pedestrians, and by vehicles, and I realize this is a complicated situation, because you've got the city, you've got the county, you've got the state, all involved in this one intersection, and they all may have different policies and priorities, but I think it just emphasizes the need for us to double down on that, and make sure that as we build, or allow contractors or developers to build new infrastructure, that we demand that that infrastructure be built to the highest possible quality, and according to the standards that this commission has already laid out with regards to complete streets, and making sure that our streets are as safe as possible for all users, you know, I did the proclamation tonight on motorcyclists, we have bicyclists, we have pedestrians, we have so many users of our transportation infrastructure, but yet so much of it is designed around one mode, which is the, you know, automobile, and then we see disastrous consequences from that often, so I think it's just a comment, but I obviously support this, I think it's important, particularly in this location, but in any location, that we build this infrastructure to last and to serve all users.
Thank you, Commissioner Olivas, Commissioner Casada.
Thank you, Madam Chair, I'll start with Board Member Court, how long, we got it, we did it, back when I was an APS School Board member, Kathy Court was also a School Board member, we've been advocating for this that long ago, and it's because of the challenges that it was state, and city, and county. And it's because of the challenges that it was state and city and county, this is how long it takes, right? But today, we're celebrating, we're celebrating the victory. It took a long time, and, but, we're gonna not dwell on that, but dwell on, you know, safe place for our children moving on to the future. We were advocating it before the K-8 went in, and when we knew the K-8 went in, we knew we were gonna be in trouble, but we had overcrowded schools up there. The K-8 was so important to that area in order to relieve some of the classroom sizes, but yet, I think our Commissioner Olivas hit it on the head, right? Planned development needs to happen. There has to be a master plan in place before we allow people to develop, because now we've gotta spend twice the amount of taxpayer dollars going back and fixing things that should have been done right in the first place. It's no one's fault here, it was definitely a quagmire of government agencies at a crossroads. And that's, right, and that's not a joke, that's exactly what happened. But I want to thank the county, I want to thank the state, and I want to, you know, really thank the city, and I know the advocating on behalf of the district for Councilor Peña was always a big advocate for that area, and we got there. So I'll end with, thank you, thank you, thank you.
Thank you, I just want, I did want to.
And I move for approval, I'm sorry.
I'll second that, and I, thank you, Commissioner Casada. I did want to add, so does this make it like a complete streets as per county?
So not necessarily, it has elements to it by having the multi-use trail that's adjacent to the school. The complete streets would have a few more features, like we, this one is a little bit unique, because there's a lot of challenges other than just being city, DOT, and county. The other part of it is APS is pretty adamant about not doing improvements outside of their right-of-way. And so when a facility of this size came in, it just led to creating some challenges that we're now addressing now. So it's not classified as a complete street per the ordinance, but it has enough of the elements where it's not just designed for multi, it's not just vehicular, it is more multi-use just because of the trail. We don't have sidewalk, but we don't necessarily need sidewalk because we have the trail. So we will have the ADA access to the school, and it's actually going all the way from, now from Trisco Vista, and it'll go down to the main entrance of George Sanchez's school, so.
Great, great, and I did, just to the point, I support this 100%, us improving, especially South of Central, I always say, but the APS piece, I just want to say it out loud, because this isn't the first time, right? And the idea that, I guess, I want to say out loud that when we, like, there's not a high school in all of Albuquerque that's gonna be 100% bus riders, and that expectation, I think, like, we've seen it so many with charter schools and all the impact that that traffic has, and we obviously want to support schools and education, and they have to account for traffic and all these things, so. So thank you for making this happen, and I just want to name those things out loud that when we continue to, that those agreements should be in place as well, the reality of what we could go. But we have a first and a second, and please call the roll.
Madam Vice Chair Barboa.
Yes.
Madam Chair Baca.
I think we may have lost her.
Commissioner Casada.
Aye.
Commissioner Benson.
Aye.
Commissioner Olivas.
Yes.
You have a two-pass.
Thank you.
On to item 11, Discussion, Planning, and Development Services. Director Nick Ham to present.
Good evening, Commissioners. If you just bear with me for a moment, we have a brief presentation to share with you all regarding some of the code enforcement activities.
Appreciate it.
Okay, Madam Chair Baca, Vice Chair Barboa, members of the Commission, good evening. Nicholas Ham, Director for Planning and Development Services, in form of a case. So tonight, Mr. Gotti and myself, we'll do our best to explain some of those activities and invite a discussion or questions that you all might have about those. So just to get started, county code enforcement is, so zoning authority at least comes from the police powers of the state, and so specifically for county code enforcement, we're empowered by state law and county ordinances. A lot of these codes have both a civil and a criminal penalty component, civil penalties being we can pursue fines that would be imposed by a judge. A lot of the codes do have a criminal component where someone could potentially be given time in a correctional facility for some transgressions that might occur. That's generally not something that the county is interested in. Really, what our departments are going for is compliance, and willing compliance is the ideal in a scenario where we would envision that occurring, a constituent lets our department know about an issue, we send an inspector out and investigate the report, they find evidence of something occurring, they'll send a letter or get in contact with the property owner that's having the issues, and then, safe weeks or days later, that gets resolved, and all people go on their merry way. Doesn't always happen like that, but it does quite frequently. So many of our cases, we do receive information from the public, we respond to that, and we're able to get in touch with someone that could remedy that through their own means. There are a lot of codes that run through Planning and Development Services, so this is a non-exhaustive list of codes that are administered by various sections in Planning and Development Services. So the ones that we're gonna talk about specifically this evening are the zoning code, the building codes, the health protection codes, and we'll get into the nuisance abatement ordinance, which is one of our newer tools for compliance that the county was able to adopt after the county's charter wasn't meant to give us home rule. We now have some of the powers of the state, so we can do some of the things that the state of New Mexico could do, or that the court system could do, without having to petition those systems of government to do that for us or with us. So one of the things I want to talk to you about is just volume and timelines. So generally, how this works is we will be informed of an issue, an inspection will be conducted within 24 to 48 hours of us being made aware of that. We will, if we find evidence of an issue, we'll send a 30-day notice of violation. That is a remedy period, and then on day 31, or as close as we humanly possibly can, we'll go out and conduct a follow-up inspection. If some issue still exists, we'll give what's called a 10-day or a final notice of violation, where they have a final remedy period, or else we start to pursue higher levels of authority. So we can go to Metropolitan Court for certain issues, if it's a more serious matter and we need, you know, injunctive relief, or we need a judge to order someone to do something, we can petition District Court. I'm gonna say this in a way that I don't mean to denigrate the courts, I think they're overburdened, and I think that when we ask them to remedy things like weeds or a zoning violation, when they're on the same docket with domestic violence or property crime or things like that, you could imagine how we might get lost in the fray a little bit. And it's just a challenge that we've dealt with, you know, we deal with currently, it's something we dealt with historically, anticipate we'll deal with that in the future. It's just, society asks a lot of the courts, we maybe don't rank as high as some of those issues that they deal with, but it's still something that we have at our disposal. And just to take a moment to thank our legal department for help with that. So Ken and his staff are always very helpful when we have to do that, and I wanted to acknowledge their efforts. So the zoning department, you can see these numbers here are quite voluminous. In 2022, we pursued 1,300 or so enforcement records, that was, so we conducted 3,200 or so inspections, 73 of those went to Metropolitan Court. This year, we've done 532 enforcement cases, 1,600 or so inspections, and 30 of those have gone to Metro Court. For building enforcement, last year, 1,070 enforcement inspections, the folks that you acknowledged tonight, those are the people that do those, and this year, we've done 340 enforcement inspections. Health protection, so these are, this is the sciency group of the department, pools, vector control, health and sanitation complaints, things of that nature. So 196 last year, 53 this year. All of these codes, where there is a public health and safety component, they can lead into the nuisance abatement track. So if we exhaust the remedy period through our conventional enforcement, and we don't think it's a good candidate for court, or we find that there's a better chance that we'd be able to resolve it through our own process, we can then refer that to the county's nuisance abatement office. Those would be things like dilapidated unsafe buildings, we could do surfacing sewage, just things that are threats to the community that need to be remedied, that are worthy of county investment, of our resources and our financial resources, both your human capital and actual capital. You've heard of clean and lean ordinances, this is one of those, so we're able to deploy public funds on private property and then pursue those funds on the back end of something getting fixed. So when we come to you and we say, County Commission, please help us approve this resolution so we can go knock this building down, after we do the work that you all approve, we'll file a financial instrument in the clerk, and that would either be paid off by a subsequent purchaser, the person that owns the property, and there is a court process that we can endeavor to, that we can undertake to try and get those monies back down the road. But the idea is that we spend this money, fix a problem, and then somehow get it back into the county's pocketbook to be able to redeploy those in the future on other problem properties.
Can I interrupt with a question?
Absolutely, at any time.
Just about that, because I've been so interested, thank you for bringing this information forward. So, you said clean and lean, I like, that's easy for me to remember. You get that, you do the work, the property is still owned by the property owner, we do the work to correct the nuisance and the harm and damage that property or building structure might be causing, and then we put a lien, so the property owner still holds it, but they can't, in other words, develop or do anything on it until they have paid back. Is that the way it works?
Madam Chair, Commissioner Barboa, Vice Chair, I should say. Well, to answer the first question, the county never wants to take title of these properties. We never want to take over these properties, we, all our goal is here is to fix a problem so that these properties can be re-released to the wild, so to speak. On the question of can they redevelop, sure, they might have trouble securing financing until that instrument is satisfied, and also through a sale, through a process where they would use a title company or a title search, that would be revealed during that process, and it should be paid by the proceeds of the sale. So it doesn't paralyze the property from being utilized in some way, but that instrument does have the goal of recovering the public's resources that the county deployed there.
Thank you, yeah, I just wanted to understand the process.
Of course, and if, at any point in this, if there's a point that I can clarify, by all means, please interrupt me. So 14 cases last year, 24 this year, both years, we've resolved 11 of those. If they're not resolved yet, that means that we're just still working on them. So these can take some time, but it's still a more efficient and nimble process than our experience has been with the court system. I mean, we would spend an amount of time to get a setting in front of a judge prior to us being able to bring it to your feet and actually do something about it. So this is an excellent tool to add to our kit. You'll see some cases, Commissioner Olivas asked a fair question, why did this case take so long and this other one didn't? And the oversimplified answer is that the nuisance abatement ordinance is newer, so we've been able to use that more effectively on cases that have come our way contemporarily. So, you know, we've got a backlog of properties that we're trying to work on as well, but we're also, at the same time, we're trying to clear properties that are coming to our attention more recently. I'm gonna turn this part over to Mr. Gotti.
That picture.
Thank you for allowing us to kind of go through this a little bit. You know, it's really a good opportunity, because I know that when oftentimes our new commissioners come on board, you're kind of bombarded with a million things you have to know about budget and procurement, and on and on and on. So this is really a good opportunity to kind of go through some of these things. So, you know, Nick did a great job of kind of running through the day-to-day and the numbers and what types of enforcement we do on a daily basis. One of the things I just wanted to touch base on is that a lot of folks choose to try to remedy a large enforcement issue, and sometimes the path to remedy that is for them to ask for a new zone, right? Or a special use permit, or some other zoning entitlement to allow them to keep on doing what they're doing. Maybe they were doing something like a contractor's yard or some kind of business, and it was fine, it was just in the wrong place. Maybe it was really in the wrong place and they can't do it at all, but maybe they're doing something that is, something that we can address and we can help them do appropriately. And in those cases, you're always, you may end up seeing some of these. A lot of the zoning cases that the County Planning Commission deals with are corrective, right? They're trying to remedy a situation and get the proper zoning in place. So one of the things I just wanted to mention, I know this came, we had a nuisance case last year, is the majority of these cases are quasi-judicial, meaning that you're judges, and that's why we have that image of the judge. But you're making a decision based on the facts in the record that was developed in the hearing at the Planning Commission. In some cases, if the origin of the case was with the zoning administrator, and it got appealed to the Planning Commission, and then ultimately back up to this Board of County Commissioners, it's very important just to realize that you're applying facts based on the record in front of you to the particular case. And I know that there are often times where you'll be tempted to, oh, well, let me look on Google Earth, or let me, oh, I heard that, you know, that this is really going on over here, or I'm gonna drive by and take a look at that. It's really inappropriate to do that kind of thing, because you really want to concentrate on what everybody has been, what has been shared with everybody through the process and the creation of that record. And so there are pitfalls with that, because you don't want to be a witness in a case that you're also being a judge on. So that's just really an important thing I wanted to, I know you know that, I just wanted to make sure that we are being consistent about that, and some of you, I hadn't had enough time to really go through that. So that was just kind of the overall point, is if it's quasi-judicial, we really want to make sure that we're keeping it to the record, and I urge you, you know, to ask staff, ask our wonderful legal staff, we all try to make sure that we are avoiding all of the pitfalls that can occur in some of these land use cases, because oftentimes, they're big businesses, oftentimes, there's a lot of money, there's a lot of resource involved, and so on. So that was the, wasn't trying to be funny with the picture, just wanted to make it clear that you all are acting as judges in those cases. Next slide? I don't, do I do the next slide? Okay, great. I just touched on this, really, the quasi-judicial proceedings are a little different, and in some cases, it's very difficult to ascertain what is quasi-judicial and what is legislative. In general, land use cases, nuisance abatement are quasi-judicial because you're discussing, you're making a decision about one small piece of land, whether it's a quarter acre or several acres, but it's one aggregate piece, one aggregate area, as compared to the larger whole, right? A legislative matter is more like an area plan or a sector plan, where you're creating policy through kind of a legislative process, legislative process that will guide, ultimately provide guidance for those smaller, more aggregate kind of decisions that you may be presented with at a future date, but it's a very different process. So legislative items, yeah, we actually encourage the community and our elected officials to engage with the community. If there's a planning process in place, we think it's very important that those things be discussed. This is an area that can get a little murky, you know, areas like, there are questions about, is this particular zoning case legislative, or is it quasi-judicial? In most cases, we try to be very safe, because we don't know, we want to be very careful about what a judge is gonna see when a when a case, if a case goes to court. We want to be in the safest possible position to defend ourselves in case that a party opposing us makes an argument that, well, this was a quasi-judicial case and you had elected officials chiming in and it's inappropriate and so on. So we really try to work hard with the staff and our legal staff and communicate with you all to ensure that we're making the right decision about whether a particular case is legislative or quasi-judicial. And I just implore you, you know, please communicate with the planning staff. They work very hard. Legal works very hard to make sure that we're keeping our processes safe, secure and transparent and allowing you the appropriate time and place you need to communicate with the folks in the community when these cases come up because it can sometimes be very controversial. So that's kind of what that speaks to. What I wanted to also say is that one of the key things we try to do, and some of these things I already mentioned, but one of the key things we try to do is make, create a scenario where if a case gets appealed to the district court and it was a case that involves a lot of investment, infrastructure investment and so on, we are on firm footing to ensure that that case was processed in a quasi-judicial manner or a legislative matter, if possible. Some of the, the reason we keep, one of the reasons we take this so seriously is because sometimes these land use cases, and luckily, Burnley County hasn't had too many of these land use cases that have been overturned or in District Court. We've learned a lot from the city of Albuquerque. There's some landmark cases where, you know, we, some things were not treated appropriately, or there was cases where there was a quasi-judicial case and there was elements of ex parte communication. The damages can be very high because you're dealing with a lot of money, a lot of investment, a lot of time. And oftentimes, the judgments and the damages can be in the millions of dollars. Sometimes more than $10 million, sometimes more than $5 million. So we're very careful about that. And one of the things we try to do is, I just mentioned, we try to keep quasi-judicial cases very kind of clear. We try to intervene if somebody is trying to reach out to an elected official to try to make a case. EPRA, all of those things, we put safeguards in place to try to ensure that if it's a controversial case, that those kinds of oftentimes emails or different things that they're trying to reach you with, that you're safeguarded from that. Again, if something has happened, if you're saying, hey, Enrico, or hey, Ken, or Nick, somebody did approach me on this, or when I was running for office, someone mentioned this to me or whatever. One of the key remedies is disclosure, right? Before you take a vote, you can always come up and say, hey, look, this was exposed to me when I was running for office, or, you know, I went to a community meeting and somebody brought this up to me. You can disclose that at the beginning of the hearing. You can say, hey, I know about this. I don't know a lot in detail, but I wanted to make it clear on the record that it will not skew my decision in any way based on the rules, based on the facts and the record. I already mentioned becoming a witness. And I wanted to just be really clear that, you know, we're here. If you have any questions, the staff works really hard. I know in years past, I've been working here for quite a few years, we would have every month two zoning cases appeals on the agenda. I don't think we have more than two or three a year now. And we really, and that's really a result of staff and legal working very hard to ensure that some of these cases that are more controversial are really addressed at the planning commission level. Staff takes extra time to ensure that we're doing our best to create compromises and workable solutions to some of these because, of course, the county wants the economic development. We want the vitality. We want to see land and property be redeveloped and developed in the county. But we want to also ensure that everybody's rights are protected. So I just, you know, I'm offering, please, we have, Ken's staff has always been really helpful. Planning staff in the last few years has really taken this to a new level in terms of, in terms of ensuring that, you know, rules are being followed. So I just want to conclude with that. If you ever have, if these things come up, as you know, we're here to answer any questions. And we'll stand for any questions if anything comes up or if you have any additional things, remarks or questions you have this evening.
Thank you, Mr. Director Gotti and Director Ham. Any questions, comments?
It's Madam Chair.
Yes.
I just wanted to comment that I've actually called on Mr. Gotti and Mr. Ham often for a few of my residents with zoning issues or complaints. And that never even makes it up to the county commission meeting level. So it's not presented, but they're always so professional and fair and judicious and a pleasure to work with. Yeah, you guys do a great job.
Thank you.
Agree. And I just really appreciate this information and learning the process. Thank you for bringing it tonight. Any other questions, comments? Thank you. Thank you so much.
Madam Chair, just if I can quickly correct the record on the last vote. Item originally eight, H, becoming 10A. Madam Chair Baca was on the line. We just lost connection to her video. And so she did vote in the affirmative for that.
Thank you, Julianne, and we'll have that on the record. Commissioner Baca voting in approval for item 10A. Wonderful, thank you. Item 12 announcement of the next commission meeting, Tuesday, May 23, 2023, administrative meeting at 5:00 PM here at Ken Sanchez's commission chambers. If there are no other business, this meeting is adjourned. Thank you. I like hitting that gavel on lips.